...meeting of the Livonia City Council. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with the offering of a prayer by Pastor Kate Mackey of Rosedale Presbyterian Church, who's also our newest fire chaplain. Please rise.
My friends, let us pray. Creator God, we give you thanks for this incredibly beautiful summer day that you've blessed each of us with, and we especially thank you for this community in which we get to enjoy it. We thank you for all those who serve here in Livonia, both as first responders, as maintenance crews, volunteers, everybody who makes this community what it is. And I especially thank you for its residents that have chosen to make Livonia its home. I now ask, Lord God, for your blessing to be upon this meeting tonight. May collegiality be first and foremost on the docket. We give you thanks for those who have come to hear and to speak and to serve. All of this, I pray, in the name of your amazing Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord, Savior, Redeemer, and Friend. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Mackey. For a brief introduction of our newest fire chaplain, Chief Genison.
Thank you, President Jolly. Good evening, Council members. You stole half my thunder, so I'll keep this as brief as possible, but tonight's my distinct honor to formally announce that Pastor Kate Mackey has agreed to join forces with Livonia Fire Rescue as our newest fire chaplain. Many in our community know Kate is an associate pastor at Rosedale Gardens Presbyterian Church, and she has been a tremendous supporter of the first responder community for many years. Kate has been a member of our CERT team and was a regular fixture at our COVID clinic during the pandemic, where she was helping with vaccinations, and I've had the pleasure of working with her on many projects over the last five years. So, thank you, President Jolly, for giving me this opportunity, and please welcome Chaplain Mackey.
Thank you very much. Would you like to say anything? You've said it all already, right?
I did. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Again, welcome. Tonight is a regular meeting. This meeting, well, excuse me, the minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting on July 24th of 2023. Our city clerk, Ms. Nash, will now take the role. Ms. Nash?
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We currently have six members here. Ms. McIntyre will be joining us any moment, so I suspect we will have seven. Ms. McIntyre is present. At this time, I would entertain a motion regarding the meeting minutes of June 26th of 2023.
So move.
Support.
We have a motion for approval by McCullough, support by Vice President Toy. Are there any additions or comments to the minutes from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr.
Just for the sake of the audience, since we have a large audience here, I will be voting present, not because I don't support the minutes, but because I was not here for the previous meeting. Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will also be voting present, as I was not at the last meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Ms. Toy?
I was not here, but I will be voting.
It's a wonder that we got through the last minute.
It is a wonder.
Situation season.
Are there any additions, subtractions, or comments on the minutes from the audience? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, will you please take the votes approving the minutes?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Present.
Councilmember Donavick?
Present.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes are approved. At this time, the council has set aside 30 minutes for members of the audience to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda this evening. That is limited to up to three minutes per audience member, and Ms. McIntyre will be taking the time here on our clock. Sometimes it's a little fussy, so please have a little patience with us. I will say, we have a little bit larger, no, that's not the right remote. We do have a little bit larger audience than we are normally accustomed to. I will note that any items regarding the deer in Livonia will be covered later on on our agenda, so those matters should not be spoken about at this time, and we'd ask the audience to be mindful of everybody who'd like to speak and not be repetitive in nature in regards to the comments. So with that being said, we'll have our first audience member. Good evening. Please tell me your name and address for the record.
Hi, Deborah Christensen. I live in Livonia. President Jolly, congratulations on your newest Jolly of Joy.
Thank you.
We at the Save Alfred Noble had a tremendous turnout for our picnic held in June. Thank you to the council member who attended and to those who were running for various seats for their attendance as well. It was an incredible sight to see people from the adjoining residential streets walking through the grassy baseball field to the picnic shelter where the picnic was held. It was a glorious evening of commonality and community. Build it, and they will come, I believe that. Noble warrants preservation. I wanted to publicly thank the mayor, the Human Relations Commission, and the Livonia Democratic Club for holding the very first successful Livonia Pride celebration. While it was only two hours long, it was a great start of annual recognition, and hopefully next year we can get the council on board with something even bigger. I vote for a parade and flags, lots of flags. In preparation for tonight's meeting, I read through the items attached to the agenda, one of them being a report from the police department's traffic bureau. My question is this, President Jolly. How is the police department able to gather and provide the statistics of deer traffic accidents, yet unable to provide statistics of blacks pulled over in our city? I'm asking for my minority friends living and working in Livonia and those just passing through. I'm really asking for all of us. Lastly, with regard to the assault of a minor that occurred at the rec center, Councilman Donavick stated that council knew of the incident within an hour of its occurrence. If that's the case, how come council didn't address it with the community? Get ahead of it, as we know that it kind of got out of control in social media. As if this wasn't a big enough issue, President Jolly, please, could you use your leadership to assist your less experienced council members on the way that they speak to in regard their constituents, especially on social media? Could you please remind them that they represent all of us in the city, that being kind and respectful matters? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Turan, and my address is 14241 Doris Street, and it's Livonia. I'm here tonight because I brought my son, who is 18. He goes to Churchill High School. He has special needs, and I filled out the grant form for the neighborhood grant application and did not get the money or was not awarded the money because I didn't see that it was for black parties specifically. I went ahead and started the project, and I wanted to let you know about what I started in hopes that you can lead me in a direction to continue the project and help with some funding along the way. Because my child has special needs, there have been many doors closed in our face, and we've been excluded from many things, including any programs at the current Livonia Rec Center. There was a little blurb in the spring Livonia Rec Center newspaper that said they're interested in starting programs for kids with special needs, and what they had planned was a dance. My son has ambulatory issues, so a dance is not something he's going to game, he's going to be game four. So I took your kindness signs in mind as I walk through Rotary Park two, three times a week, and I know that the Down Syndrome kids that we associate with are my favorite. I hate to say that with my son here, but they're always kind and they're always gentle. And we have a large group of friends that we have made from the Plymouth Miracle League. If you haven't been out to the Miracle League in Plymouth, the address is, my husband helped me memorize it, now I can't remember it, but it is on Theodore Street, right past the railroad track. If you take Plymouth Road and you follow it right along, 357 Theodore Street. So we've made friends through that in Plymouth. Some of them have Down Syndrome, some of them have autism. I started what I'd like to call the Livonia Kindness Club, because these kids need to get out in the public and in the community. Livonia doesn't have a whole lot going on in that area right now. We do appreciate the parks and the adaptations. So to make it an intergenerational event, we are working with Silver Village, and we had 21 residents sign up. The kids made bird feeders, and we go once a week and fill them, and the kids break up in teams, and they have maps, and they all have adults with them. It gets them out of the house. So many parents thanked me last week because our general schedule is to start at Silver Village, and then we have a rotating schedule of the different parks. So we got to visit the new playscape at Bicentennial Park. Totally awesome. I approached all of the people that were there, because the second part of our day is hiding bubbles, and we have a little card in the Ziploc bag with the bubbles that says, kindness counts, spread it, enjoy your day, and it says, it has a little place for the kids to write their names, who hid it. And so some of the kids at Bicentennial Park thought we were playing a game, and so I went up to all the groups and I said, oh, no, those are for your kids. And I went to every single group, and this stern-looking man, I didn't want to approach because he reminded me of my dad when I was a kid, but then I saw his wife approach him, and she had a grandchild. Can I just finish and then I'll leave it?
I have to treat everybody the same, so I just want to make, is there any objection to the council to giving her another minute?
Thank you.
Any objection from the council?
No objection.
Thank you. I just want to finish the story and leave some information for you. So this gentleman was sitting with his wife, and I said, that's part of our kindness club. These special needs kids need to get out, they need to be a part of the community, and he said, are you a 501(c)? I said, no, I'm hoping to get the money from the grant to help pay for these few little costs, and he said, who do I call at Livonia to let them know that you should get the money? I'm going to go home and I'm going to call. And so I'm watching my son play with his friends, they love the zip lines. Just the laughter out of my own son made the other people laugh, and they were all having a good time. A lot of people steer away from special needs kids, and these kids were taking turns, they were pushing other kids, and the parents were there appreciating it. And the man came to me when we left, and he said, I called and left a message, God bless you for all you do. I can't handle one grandchild. I don't know how you guys do this. This is such an awesome program, an awesome idea. So I'm going to leave my contact information. If anybody has any ideas of other ways that we can get funding, maybe $300 is what we need. You might look at this picture and just see two kids filling bird feeders, but as a teacher, I see it as so much more than that, because these are two friends that have special needs, and they were able to complete the task. They each have a map, one has a map, the other one is telling my son which house numbers to look at, because he's much higher functioning, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where can I leave it at?
I appreciate your efforts. I myself have a son with, well, I had a son with trisomy 18, so I appreciate your efforts, and the community does the well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other audience communication? Mr. Smith is in the back. Mr. Smith, please identify yourself and your address, please.
President Jolly, my name is Darrell Smith, and I have a 14006 profile. I'm a little choked up from that lady because those are very special people. I agree. I want to talk about the South Side of Livonia. It gets neglected all too often, and I don't live in the South Side, but I'd love to speak for people who are marginalized, and in this city, the South Side is being marginalized. And I know the mayor is the one that I need to be talking to, but it's kind of difficult. I sent her an email about five weeks ago, never heard a word back, and she's the one that keeps saying there's no money, but you find money if you want to spend it, you find it. So I want to say the South Side needs to be represented, and the South Side needs to have the Noble Library preserved as a library, and so, and I'm going to try to speak to the mayor yet again. The mayor doesn't seem to come here very often. I wonder, I'm going to ask her if she'll ever do a town hall meeting, because she needs to have a face-to-face with some of the people in Livonia, and maybe she'll watch this, maybe she's watching it now, I hope so, because, you know, I was a little touched by the previous speaker, but I'm kind of angry about what's going on with the South Side. And those people, they deserve everything that Livonia's out to offer as much as anybody. So that's my time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this time, if there's no further audience communication, I'll welcome our city treasurer, Linda Shield, to the podium with an update in regards to the treasurer's office. Michelle?
Thank you, President Jolly. Here as the treasurer of the city of Livonia, there's two items I want to speak about tonight. The first is I wanted to notify all Livonia property owners that the summer tax bills were issued on July 1st and are due and payable without interest through Thursday, September 14th, 2023. During this time, we do accept partial payments, so if it's easier for you to make payments every two weeks or every month, you may do so. On Friday, September 15th, 2023, and the first of every month thereafter, interest of 1% will be added to any unpaid summer tax bill. The 2023 summer and winter tax bills are payable to the Livonia Treasurer until Thursday, February 29th, 2024. Residents and business owners have until Friday, August 18th, 2023, to apply to have their summer tax bill automatically withdrawn from their bank account. For further information regarding your taxes or including resident information regarding tax deferrals, please visit the treasurer's page at livonia.gov.
Thank you, Ms. Nash.
Thank you. The next item I wanted to address is Council Resolution Number 35522. Last year, I came before city council at a study meeting on November 14th, with the item appearing on the regular agenda of December 5th, resulting in Council Resolution 355-22. This resolution is regarding the yearly payments for the next three years made to BSNA for their software support for our tax database and internet service for the tax and assessing system. In writing and in person, I stated that the approval of the BSNA request would mean that the city of Livonia can continue to provide free-of-charge tax and assessing information to not only our residents, but also to mortgage companies, title companies, realtors, contractors, and prospective buyers through the city website. However, the part that I just read was not put in as part of the Council Resolution Number 35522. Therefore, I would like to ask council to amend Resolution 35522 to add, quote, "so that the city of Livonia can continue to provide free-of-charge tax and assessing information to not only our residents, but also to mortgage companies, title companies, realtors, contractors, and prospective buyers through the city website," unquote, in the appropriate part of the resolution that our law department determines works best to meet the spirit of my original request.
Thank you, Mr. Bernier. Have you taken note of that?
Yes, I wrote a memo to the administration on the issue, and I gave a copy to Michelle on it. The resolution as passed by council put no restrictions on it, it just authorized the funding for the purchase. As a result, there weren't the limitations that Michelle wanted placed into the resolution. So if council, of course, that's a decision whether what council wants to do, but council certainly has the authority to amend a resolution if it wants.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr.
I would like to offer a resolution or the motion to make the amendment as described by Treasurer Shield, if there's support.
I'll support that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr.
Just regarding that motion, I think, first of all, Linda did a great job of explaining this, and I think we, I trust that we all understand the issue at hand. This has always been something that I think has been understood to be made available to the residents at no cost. She did state that previously. I think it's important the ordinance reflects that, not to say that, you know, there couldn't be changes to that at some point, but if there were ever to be changes to that, I think that's something that should come before council, and by adding this language into that resolution, I think it matches the intent, and it also appropriately keeps council in the loop if anybody were to ever propose changes to that.
If there's nothing else, Ms. Toy?
If I may, I appreciate Treasurer Shield's suggestion here of doing this. I, I'm not sure if I have any background information on this. When I was treasurer, I remember Linda and others that these realtors, these mortgage companies, and we were short-staffed because they took away my deputy at the time, because of a lot of reasons, and we won't even go there. It was a political kind of thing at the time. So we were short-staffed, and when I began to look at the office and the way it functioned in those days, and I'm talking some years back, everyone, except that, and I'm not blaming the realtors or mortgage companies or any of these fine people that make things work, but they would continually call on the phones, and it was taking staff time unbelievably. So what we did was, because of the advent of the computer in those days, we put, I believe, two to three computers out front of the treasurer's office. We teamed up with the assessor's office so that they would know what was going on, and we kind of combined all that information so that we weren't answering those phones, because we were so, so short-staffed in those days. And I really appreciated that ingenuity that we were able to do, and so did the realtors and those other folks I mentioned, because we had training sessions and they came in. So my point being, is there another way to handle this, maybe? I don't know. From what I've heard, they want to charge for this or something, Linda? Help me understand it. I, I'm not real clear.
Well, if, I'm going to interject here.
Sure.
I think that this is probably a very worthy cause. I would prefer, there was a motion on the floor. I would prefer that this be on the next regular meeting agenda as an agenda item, so that we can discuss this and look at the materials and look at the actual resolution as it stands now with the language that you're proposing.
When's the next regular meeting?
Couple of weeks.
The next regular would be on July 24th.
Is that going to be enough time?
I can do it. I have no reason.
I mean.
So the reason, again, the reason I want this, I was asking for this resolution to be done tonight is, it's no changes, it's what everybody thought was there, because that's what I said verbally, that was what is in written form. So anything going forward would be a discussion on its own, whether it's a good thing, a bad thing, that's a discussion on its own, and it wouldn't be brought by me. So what I want to make sure of is that the resolution that has, you know, has been in place before and always took care of this, I found out, did not take care of it because it did not have these specific words in there, and I just want to strengthen the resolution to put these words in there, because that's what I said out loud, that's what I put in writing to council, and I just want to make sure the words are there.
I'm not trying to give you a hard time here, I just, at all, really, I just, I guess I don't understand to what effect in practice it has an impact on the practice of business and the organization.
So there is, there is something that is in works to be changed effective August 1st, not from me, not from my office. So by doing this tonight, then the minutes would be approved, and then this wording would be in the resolution, so.
Mr. Chair.
If there's a change that needs, that wants to take place, it would have to come before council for discussion.
And I think, I'm going to go to Mr. Barr in just a second, but I think that's, that's my concern here, is that there's some stuff going on that we're not fully aware of here. Mr. Barr?
I think, I'll just try, this has been said, but I'll just try to summarize this simply, and it's good that we have a lot of residents here tonight, because this affects all of you currently, and as long as I can remember, I've done it many times, you can go on the city website and without any problem, without any cost, you can look up what your taxes are, what your tax histories are, and you can look up any address in Livonia and see what it is. That's all public information. That's free. That's something that's provided by your tax dollars, you don't have to pay for it. What the, that has always been the intent. All the Treasurer Shield is saying is that that language about the fact that that would be free, when we approved the system to do this last fall, that language was not included in the resolution. So all we're doing is including the language to keep this the way that it's always been. If there were to be any changes to that, if someone were to propose that we charge residents for that, that discussion can be had, but it would have to come through council because then it would become an ordinance change. That's all that this is about, and I'd just like to point out, I have a motion on the floor that's been supported. I don't intend on withdrawing that motion to vote on that tonight.
Ms. Toy?
Does that mean, then, if I may, that this resolution would cast a large net to everyone out there that would call the treasurer's office? There'd be absolutely no charge to any of them?
That's how it is right now.
Right.
But if, without this.
Is that what you want to continue?
Yeah, without this information in there, then nobody really has to come before council.
But could we?
Change anything.
Could we offer it free to our residents and charge some of the businesses for using it, like I tried to do with the computers many years ago?
And again, I don't know that answer. That would be part of the discussion if somebody were to choose to change this. Then there'd be the full discussion. I'm not the department that wants to change this, so I don't have all this information. I just would like to make sure that as I presented this to council in the fall, that those words are part of the resolution.
I'm just trying to get clarity to it, that's all.
I know.
And I appreciate you bringing it forward. If I may go to Mr. Bernier for one minute, Mr. President. Mr. Bernier, if we approve this tonight and we come upon some information by the 24th or whatever, can we add anything to this, the amendment, in a resolution? I'm trying to remember the process.
If you vote and pass the resolution tonight, at the next meeting, when the minutes are adopted, it would become the resolution unless the mayor chose to veto the resolution.
So it'd be up to the mayor. What about?
No, it's not, the mayor has the decision whether or not she wants to veto.
Wants to veto.
Right.
But may I ask this? Could we add anything at that point to those minutes? So if we found out something that the treasurer needed, or the resident needed, or whoever needed, could we add to that with the majority of this council?
It's more problematic, and I believe that's why Mr. Jolly recommended that we do it at the next meeting when all the information is present. I'm not speaking for Mr. Jolly, but I believe that's the reason for it. Because there, if you are going to change it, it becomes more difficult to change it again.
Right.
When, at the next meeting, when we have the reading of the minutes.
Okay. Thank you. I just needed that clarity. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Treasurer Shield, for being here. I understand your intent. I remember we spoke about this before, that your intent, the treasurer's intent was to make sure that the service was provided free to our residents. It's a great resource. I've used it multiple times. It helps you keep track of your property taxes. Sometimes you can pay your water bill through it. I think it's a good source for our residents. When I voted for this back then, I voted under the, under the impression that this was going to be free of charge to our residents, and I intend to support that. If something comes before council later date, then we can look at it separately, but my understanding is you're asking to clean up the language, and, you know, I'm ready to vote for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. McIntyre?
It's my understanding, and by the way, I have cold, not COVID, I have a cold fever, so I'm trying to see if my, I'm trying to help my brother, because we all sit close together, I am, I'm asking, it's not COVID. This is what you brought to us in November.
Correct.
Correct, and we just ended up with some different wording in the ordinance or the resolutions that was prepared.
When the council resolution was prepared, it wasn't prepared with the wording that I just stated, and that's what I want to get into it, because those are the words that were in the letter that I sent to you and that I verbally stated at the council meeting.
And because we've seen this, I'm comfortable supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Is there any audience comments in regards to the motion by Mr. Barr to add this language? Ms. Toy?
I'm sorry to speak again, except that I, I'm wondering, do, do we necessarily have, it sounds like we're saying, if this doesn't pass, then the resident's going to get charged. I, is that the intent then? It isn't now, you said, right?
It's not being charged now, and I don't intend to, but if it's not in the resolution, there is a good chance that it can be put forth without coming to council.
Okay. Well, I mean, I for one wouldn't vote for that. Now, if I'm going to charge some of these businesses to use that, I might rethink that, but to the resident that pays the taxes, as been said, and all that good stuff that we all do, then yes, that should be free of charge, but to different businesses, yeah, a little bit of problem with that, because it does eat up a lot, a lot of time.
And again, I'm not speaking to the charging of it, that's not what I want to do, so I'm not the person putting forth that program. If that's something that comes before council, then that's something that'll get spoken to at that time, and all of the information will be put forth by that department.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I've handed the gavel to Vice President Toy. Ms. Toy, can I have the floor?
Please. Go right ahead.
I think there's cloaked understanding of why we're doing this, and I don't object to anything that you're discussing. I just don't fully understand why we're discussing this right now, and that's what gives me hesitation.
Because it. Because it.
Also, there may be a bigger thing going on here. This is a service that is paid for by tax dollars. I, my one and all, myself, all of you, we currently live in the information age, this is public information, it should never be charged, to see public information in regards to this, that is readily available and has been for the last, at least 10 years, possibly longer. There's no question that it shouldn't be associated with a fee that's already been paid for by most of the people in this room through their taxes that they do pay. I have questions in regards to, this is literally the first that I've heard of this.
Correct.
And I'm the council president, it sounds like there's people up here who did know about this ahead of time, and we have adjusted resolutions in the past by placing them on the agenda as an agenda item.
So I just became aware of the fact that because that wording is not in the resolution, and again, referring to Mr. Bernier's memo that he did, that that's how it can be done without coming to council, because these words were not included in the resolution, even though I said them out loud, even though they were in the letter that was submitted to council, because the words were not part of the resolution. That means if there is any department, or which would, you know, is, the mayor's over the department head, that would like to change what's currently being done, they can do so without coming to council.
You know, I don't want to continue this conversation, but it sounds like you know something is on the horizon that you're not saying, and saying it might be helpful for us to understand this. And you might say something that provides the information that makes this a no-brainer for us to do this tonight. I just don't like being behind the information about what I'm being asked to vote on. That's the simplest thing here. It sounds like you know something, it sounds like maybe some other people know something, I don't know what we're talking about.
Wait a minute, you don't have the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm in charge here, you're more permanent.
It's right. We fired him.
Just, to be clear, I've heard things for the first time here tonight, too, and Linda can correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I've heard, I've heard that, I heard the date in there, August 1st thrown out, I'm not sure if that's a hard date or anything, but I know this. Linda Sheil's been our treasurer for a long time, it's not customary for her to come forth with these kind of things unless she sees a purpose. And what I'm hearing is a simple request to make a, a, a resolution that we previously passed match what we all thought we were passing, that's it. And I trust the fact that there's a reason this is coming in for us now. And President Jolly, I appreciate what you commented about the, you know, the appropriateness or the lack of appropriateness to charging for something like this. I, I share that view, I think that's clear, but even if we were to concede for the moment that there's a discussion to be had there, I think council needs to be part of that conversation. And I think it's a very simple request tonight, that if this language is added in here, that any changes to that brings council into loot versus a mayor or a department head, and I don't know of anything specifically, I'm just going off of what I just heard over the podium, but versus somebody else being able to unilaterally do that because we failed to include that language in the ordinance. I, I think, I, I, I appreciate where you're coming from with wanting to get information, I really do. But in this case, I, I really believe this is a simple request before us that we can handle now to eliminate any possibility of that happening.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam President.
Go right ahead. Councilman McCullough.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
President.
Through the chair, to Linda, just a quick question. So, just like you said, nothing changes, this is just basically putting in the ordinance what you said about charging, passing off the fees to the residents.
And what was, what was in writing and what I verbally stated here at the podium about it being free.
Thank you. I have no issue with this, I understand my colleague, Mr. Jolly's concerns, but this gives us still some time for the next meeting, that if we did want to take a deeper look at it, we could add something before the August 1st.
Go right ahead, Council President, and then Councilman Morgan.
Okay, last comment in regards to this for me anyways. So courts in this council speak through our written orders, our written resolutions. There sounds like there might be a disconnect in regards to having those reflect what was intended. You've said several times that your words at the meeting, your words, unfortunately, that's not what we voted on, we voted on what was before us in the written form.
Right.
So, Mr. Bernier, not at all blaming you, but we need to work with the department heads to make sure that what we are doing is accurately representing what they think we are doing. And again, it's not any shade on you at all.
That was a conversation we've had before, why we want the department heads to review the resolutions before they come to council, and so, not blaming Ms. Sheil on this one, but we do want, we try to bring them in on this, and there is, as my opinion, my memo indicated, I form no opinion on whether there should or should not be charged for this, but simply, as Mr. Jolly says, we know as lawyers, that you speak through the resolution, and the resolution puts no restrictions on it. And that, that's what my opinion was.
Thank you. Councilman Morgan?
Yeah, I'm just going to, I'd just like to say that, you know, we've done language cleanup before because there has been some errors, or there's, it's not come out quite exactly how we intended to, and that sounds exactly to me like what Ms. Sheil is saying here regarding this, and I, I think it would be in our best interest, considering the treasurer is standing here telling us that we need to make an adjustment to this, so, I think, I, I will be in favor of this if we're going to vote on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Morgan, was there anyone else? Mr. Bernier, do you have a copy of that memo by any chance?
I do not, I didn't know this was going to be up tonight, but I could get a copy to, I could get a copy to the council members, but I, I don't have it with me.
Okay, okay, cool.
But again, I, I will emphasize that the written, what Ms. Sheil said is in fact true. The written documentation, she requested that be provided for free. I don't remember if she said it, I believe her, but I simply don't remember everything that's said from that podium, but my opinion was that the resolution, we speak through the resolution, and the resolution did not put any restrictions on whether you could or couldn't charge, and that was my opinion. So if the, if the administration wanted to charge, they could, if they didn't want to, they didn't have to.
Okay. Let's make it free to everyone. No, I'm teasing. Okay, was there anyone else? No? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this item before we leave it? Okay, if not, Treasurer Sheil, any comment?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the resolution by Barr?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye, motion passes, I'm returning the gavel to Councilman Jolly.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes, go right ahead, is that on this topic?
I, I've been informed that my microphone is not working, and when I press the power button, nothing comes on, so I don't know if, if I can hear it.
Do you, do you plan on speaking this moment, or no?
Can you hear that? Okay. No, but I just, I wanted to make our technical folks and clerk, our backup technical folks aware, and to those who are here, I.
Can you all hear Ms. McIntyre?
Yeah.
Okay.
But they can't, they can't, if they're watching.
If they're streaming.
How about if you'd like to speak, I'll share you my microphone with you. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, no, none at all. Okay, so, we're going to go to council announcements, I'll announce real quick, we have new data in items 10, 13, and 15, and I'll also announce that it's our clerk, Ms. Nash's 21st birthday on July 14th, or something like that, so.
Something like that, 21 times something.
Okay. So, from the council, any council comments, announcements, Mr. Mac, or Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. One item that I'm going to be looking for support from my colleagues to put into a committee is the Noble Library, specifically the Noble Library and future plans to that land use. I've. Support. Thank you. I always, I always mess that up and keep going, so thank you, Mr. Donavich. We've been talking about it, and I actually went through our committee assignments, and we've had some items about the actual library, capital outlay, and future plans, but we never had anything specifically about Noble. And so for this reason, I think it's imperative to start talking and taking a deeper dive into the future, whatever it may be, I think it's time to stop punting it and, and get around the table and, and find out a solution for the long term. So for that, I'd like to put that into capital outlay and infrastructure committee.
Mr. President?
Okay, we have a motion from McCullough, I believe we have support from Mr. Donavich. Mr. Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you to Council McCullough for bringing this item up, it's something that we, as a city, have been talking about behind the scenes for decades, and I think it's about time the city council and this mayor do something about it. And there's a lot of residents that have different opinions on it, there's, the council has different opinions on it, but I think we should start having a discussion about it. Council started to talk about it, we had a really in-depth discussion about our infrastructure needs in our city, we have some $90 million that we need to invest into our buildings across the community, and we need to have honest discussion about where we're going to use those dollars, because we don't have that money just sitting around, because there's 100 different things in this community that we need to do. And we all have different opinions how we should spend that money, we have different opinions about the future of the Noble Library and our libraries in, in general, but I think we need to have that discussion, so I will be in support of this motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre?
Yeah, sorry.
It's picking up very easily, so.
Thank you, President Jolly. Trying not to give you my cold. I appreciate the, putting this into the infrastructure committee. That meeting, however, will be of limited benefit unless the mayor or our direct representative is there. We had a plan that came from the mayor's office as part of our facilities, that we did not have the funds to remediate Noble, it's my understanding, somewhere between $1 million and $2 million, just to remove the mold. Nobody wants to see a library go, but we have pressing needs to keep buildings that are currently in use being used. And at the March State of the City, the mayor announces, a surprise to everyone, at least I think a surprise to council, that we were taking a pause on this, and she's become active with the Save the Noble Library group, attended their picnic, but I have asked the mayor several times, once publicly, once privately, what the plan is. It, it's great to have the sentiment, and I appreciate why everyone wants to save the library, but council does not make this decision alone. And unless we have the administration, specifically the mayor or her chief of staff, speaking for the mayor at the meeting, as to what, what the vision is, she, it's the mayor who announced the pause, but without any parameters. What is the pause? How long does the pause last? What are the conditions that have to be met to make a decision? What, what's the objective criteria? So I'll vote for this, but unless the mayor or the chief of staff is there speaking for the mayor, this meeting is going to be of little benefit, it's going to be a discussion among ourselves. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
Just to, Councilman McCullough, I will confess that when you started speaking, I was still reading the resolution we passed in December that Linda had been talking about, and so can you just restate specifically what you're putting in a committee, so I know what I'm voting for?
You always do this to me. No, just, just the subject matter of Noble Library specifically, and future considerations of the land slash whatever to do with the facility. I was going to keep going to make Mr. Bernier keep the notes going.
Okay. Anybody from the audience in regards to this motion to put this item of Noble Library into a council committee? Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'm glad to see that somebody wants to talk some serious discussion about this, and thus hope this sounds like you'd be a part of that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If there's nothing else from the audience, Ms. Nash, will you take the vote?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The matter passes, that will be placed into a council committee. Is there anything else from the council? Ms. McIntyre?
The mother, I'm sorry. The mother that was here this evening, speaking about her son and the kind club and the activities that she's kind of taken on herself and the, the great project they have at Silver Village, I did want to mention that this Friday night, Anastasia and Katie's, which is our coffee shop on Merriman Road, on the, on the west side of Merriman, just north of Seven Mile, it's a project of My Work Matters, a 501(c)(3) whose sole mission is employment opportunities for those living with cognitive and intellectual challenges. They have their Good and Strong Club this Friday evening, July 14th, from 5:00 to 6:30, it's for adults 18 and over, 7:00 to 8:30 is for tweens and teens. And it's a social, it's vocational skills, there's a themed activity, there's fun stuff, karaoke, just karaoke, and they'll be creating no baked treats, you do need to register, but I would encourage anyone who's interested and has, and I don't know whether it's full or not, but to anyone who, who has an adult in their lives, or a teen or tween, who would be interested and enjoy an activity like this, to visit Anastasia and Katie'sCoffee.com, and it's the Good and Strong Club. So, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
Thank you, and just one more community event announcement, I have a little bit of a selfish motive in this, but this Saturday night at 7 o'clock, I, the Epistole Christian Church Choir, which I direct, actually does an annual benefit concert, a cappella choral music, and it's to raise money, you don't have to give to come, you can just come enjoy the music, but we are raising money for two exemplary Livonia organizations, one being Woodhaven Retirement Community, which I know many people are familiar with, and the other one being AAA Crisis Pregnancy Center. So if anybody's interested in some a cappella choral music at 7 o'clock this Saturday night, it's one of many events that go on across the cultural scene in this community, and we'd invite you to come at the Epistole Christian Church at 7 o'clock. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, council colleagues. We will now start the scheduled agenda for this evening. We're going to start off with the consent agenda tonight, that is items 1 through 9. Those items were previously studied at the council meeting of June 26, the study council meeting of June 26, and found to require no additional study, and those items will be voted on as a single item. Colleagues, can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Some support.
We have a motion to approve by Toy with support from Mr. Barr. Is there any audience comment on the consent agenda, items 1 through 9? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you please take the vote on items 1 through 9?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
So the consent agenda passes tonight.
Did you vote?
Councilmember Jolly.
Oh, excuse me, aye, of course. So, a little ahead of it there. The item 1 through 9 passes, the consent agenda. We're going to move on to item number 10, that's unfinished business, specifically a meeting of the Committee for Public Safety and Health, that was on June 19th of 2023, with the subject matter of options that are available concerning the culling and management of the deer and coyote populations in the city, that was referred by Council Resolution 329-19. We do have new data, as previously mentioned, from the LPD, Livonia Police Department, and resident responses as well. Ms. McIntyre is going to be doing a readout, and she slid over to Mr. McCullough's microphone, just because I'm going to have to talk a lot running the meeting. Ms. McIntyre, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly. We held this committee meeting on Monday, June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The committee members present were myself, the chair, Rob Donavick, the vice chair, and committee member Morgan. We also had council president Jim Jolly there and Brandon McCullough from the city council. The other city officials and others present were Linda Sheel, Susan Nash, Sergeant Paul Walters. He's the Traffic Services Bureau from LPD. Dave Varga, the mayor's chief of staff, Ted Davis, the superintendent of Parks and Recreation, and Don Roroff, the director of public works. We had a, we had as close to a full auditorium as I've ever seen for certainly a committee meeting. And we have a very long list of residents and others who attended. So I'm not going to read all those names, but we had a very, very good showing.
Oh, darn it.
And the subject matter was the options available concerning the culling and management of the deer and coyote populations in the city. The committee was led by the chair, myself, and we had background information that I gave as to how this subject matter came to be placed into committee, into the committee in two thousand and nineteen. And then a discussion of why it's taken so long for such a complicated topic to be discussed. And essentially, it's there are so many stakeholders and so many pieces of information that needed to be gathered. I gave a slide presentation that had been provided to me by the DNR and one provided by SEMCOG, the Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments, showing their research and data regarding deer management. Dave Varga, the chief of staff, gave additional information that was provided by the Livonia Police Department, including the calls, reports, and complaints regarding deer-related situations in the city. And the number of deer complaints and collisions have increased over the last several years. We had many residents who shared their stories and encounters with deer in their yards. The following were the complaints that we heard consistently regarding the overpopulation concerns about the high deer population. Ticks carrying Lyme disease, we heard from some folks whose spouses, I believe, are suffering from Lyme disease. Destroyed vegetation, the threat that people perceive to small pets and children with examples of deer of threatening behavior by bucks to family pets and children, and then the concern about deer vehicle collisions. We also, we also had several residents who spoke in opposition of doing anything to reduce the deer herd, including citing studies that attest that when you cull a herd, the number of deer, the herd actually becomes larger in following years. We discussed the various suggestions to control the deer population, which include an organized deer cull, protecting vegetation with coverings, taller fences, and spray solutions to deter the deer. Obviously, the vegetation with coverings, fences, and spray solution to deter the deer are things that are incumbent upon the residents. With the exception of taller fences, it depends where you live and what your fence regulations are. So if people thought that taller fences would be helpful and our zoning ordinances prevent such fences, then that would become an issue to be taken up, taken up by the city. Councilmember Rob Donavick offered a motion to join the Urban Deer Coalition. Councilmember Brandon McCullough offered a motion to put this item in a committee of the whole. And Councilmember Brandon McCullough also requested that the administration provide a report and recommendation to remove deceased deer from residential property. Right now, it is the responsibility of a resident or a business owner. If a deceased deer is on the resident or the business owner's property, that individual or family is responsible for moving the deer to the curb where it can be picked up by our waste refuse. And for a lot of people who have deceased deer on their property, which obviously they didn't kill, it's very, very difficult to do that. So Councilmember McCullough is hoping that the administration or requesting that the administration respond and see if there can be a change to the policy and if support can be provided to residents, I think, on an as-needed basis. So the two recommendations coming out of the committee, and there will be two items voted on tonight. The first is a resolution for Livonia to join the Urban Deer Coalition. And the second is a resolution to put the subject matter into committee of the whole. And then finally, that the administration provide a report and recommendation to remove deceased deer from the residential property. The item will remain in committee, and the meeting was adjourned at eight forty-four. So may I, Mr. Chair, just expand and clarify?
Sure.
So again, what we're voting on tonight is whether to join the Urban Deer Coalition and then to put this subject, to put this subject matter into committee of the whole, which is all members of the council. And with the vision being that we will ask or appoint someone, I would think from the council, to join the Urban Deer Coalition. And the reason that we propose joining the Urban Deer Coalition is because it's a regional coalition, started in Oakland County. It now includes a number of communities in Wayne County as well. It is, that's the way we can get support and information from the DNR. The DNR simply does not have the resources to work with every community, but they can work with the regional coalition. SEMCOG, Southeastern Michigan Council of Government, also works with the coalition, as does MMRMA, the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Association. And then the second, so we would join that coalition and use that as the starting point to start gathering information. You know, what options are available for a call? And none of this means that we're going to do a call. It's just getting the information. Can we verify the data that we heard about that says if you cull a herd, the herd comes back larger? So it's really the starting point for gathering information for eventually making a recommendation. And then the second, to put it in a council of committee of the whole, the committee would meet once we have enough information to act on or to consider or to go back and get another round of resident input. So tonight, we're not voting on anything that would take action or say that we're not going to take action.
Okay, so the first of those motions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The first of those motions is what?
For Livonia to join the Urban Deer Coalition.
Are you offering that at this time?
Yes.
Do I have seconds?
Support.
I'll give the support to Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I think he's lonely down there. Mr. Donavick, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was happy that this meeting was called. In the last five years, the city, the police department has had two hundred and thirty-five car accidents that have taken place. And in two thousand and twenty-two alone, two hundred and five calls for dead deer in people's backyards. Clearly, this is an issue in our community. Whether you're on the side of calling the deer or the side of not touching the deer, we're not talking about that tonight. What we're talking about is how we can gain more information so that we can make an informed decision as a city council, because it is an issue. Again, two hundred and thirty-five car accidents, deer-related car accidents in the last five years, and two hundred and five calls for dead deer in people's backyards. It is a significant issue. So I was happy that Councilwoman McIntyre called this meeting up, and we had some good information. So I'm looking forward to the future meeting and learning more about how we, as a city, can tackle this problem. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the council? Seeing none? Mr. Barr?
Through the chair to committee chair McIntyre. I was, as you know, I was blissfully on vacation during this meeting. Can you remind me, with joining this Urban Deer Coalition, what, if any, obligations there are? Financial people for the city of Livonia?
There are none. And it's not even clear that we officially need the council resolution to do it, but it was the advice of council that it would just be cleanest if we had either an order from the mayor or a council resolution. There is no obligation. It's no cost, no obligation. But I would hope that we could find a representative to engage regularly with the coalition.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Toy.
If I may, would you suggest that council president appoint that and then it comes to us? Because I would strongly suggest the deer czar should be our own. Rob Donavick.
Well, let's not get ahead of ourselves here.
Oh, man.
There may be many people wanting to serve as the deer representative.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Ms. McIntyre.
And since this is an ad hoc, and this is not specified in the charter or the ordinance or anything else, I would think that we could be informal as to how we chose this, that this is not specified, that it is to be selected by the president of the council as our standing committees.
Yeah, the only thing I would say about that is we have many items that council formally appoints a member to serve on, many of which are not standing committees. And I think we should be cautioned as to not having a process. We don't want to have multiple deer czars coming from Livonia, per se, right? I mean, I think it should be appropriate if we do it in the normal course.
So if all seven of us want to do it, you'll pick which one is allowed to represent?
I think I'll.
Okay.
The, myself or the next council president will pick the person best suited to.
Okay, the deer czar.
Be the deer czar, if that's okay. All right. So with my council colleagues having spoken, I'm going to remind the audience real quick here. I know there's a lot of interested parties here tonight who want to speak. The item before us is whether or not to join this organization to get additional information. We are not voting on having a call or doing anything else. We're just trying to seek information, to find information in regards to things we can consider to make this situation better for our residents. And you're free to speak and share your opinions on this matter. I would just ask you to be respectful of everybody's time in the room in regards to this because we are not voting on these ultimate solutions at this time. With that being said, the floor is open for comments in regards to this item. If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium. Good evening. Your name and address, sir.
I really have no thoughts on whether to call or not to call or, you know, leave them alone or anything. I'm just wondering, this has been an issue on every community surrounding Livonia, and it's been kicked around forever. And I bet you every community has voted to have further discussions and go to work groups with no feedback to the citizens. So as you're voting on, you know, entering the Urban Deer Coalition and I forget whatever else, can you set a hard date when you will come back to the community with the decision?
Yeah, we're not going to do that.
It sounds like you're punting right now.
No, but we're not going to do that because we don't ever do that, to be honest with you. The one thing that I took away from Ms. McIntyre's meeting that was of most importance, to me anyways, was that if Livonia acts alone in regards to doing anything, it's not going to make a difference. So this Urban Deer Coalition is an opportunity for us, as a city, to speak with other communities and have a larger conversation in regards to what's going to be happening here. We have a council group email address, citycouncil@livonia.gov. We have a council phone number upstairs. We all have individual addresses as well. If you don't think we're being timely about getting back to you, let us know.
Okay.
I just, I don't want to set a hard date because we may not have any information at that point. It took us a long time to schedule. It took Ms. McIntyre a long time to schedule this meeting because she was trying to get information from the DNR and other parties as well. So listen, I think the fact that we're doing this now after this being a problem for so many years.
Yeah, my point is it's been a problem for so many years. The studies are out there, the numbers are out there, and it should be a fairly quick study for you. I mean, to come to what's the best decision for Livonia here. I'm just afraid it's going to go into study and we're not going to hear anything else about it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Anybody else? Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Good evening. Mike Colleton, thirty-one, one ninety-three Bobbert Street, Livonia, Michigan. Thank you guys for what you do, volunteering your time. Ninety percent of Livonians complain. You guys are up here, so thank you for what you do, all right? So I'm not for a call or against a call. I'm a member of the Michigan United Conservation Clubs, the National Club of Many Sportsmen. We believe that man is domain. Man is responsible for the animals on God's earth. Man's responsible for controlling the herd, meaning doing it in the most humane possible. Number one, I know Livonia is an area that hunting is not legal in most places. I have a large tract of land. Many people have land much larger than mine. The home closest to me, to my south, is nearly one-eighth of a mile. I've got a lot of land. I've got a crossbow. I'm pretty good with it. But I don't shoot my cross, I don't hunt in Livonia because it's not lawful. If we're going to have some form of call, I'd like the opportunity to invite the sportsmen, the professionals who do this every year, they've been doing it for forty, fifty, sixty years, where we can do it properly. Maybe it's possible we can do a archery competition. And then the top fifty, we probably charge two hundred dollars a head. You'd probably get five hundred to a thousand entries. The first fifty are probably the best marksmen in the state. Can get here and get a plaque and get awarded. And for the money that's raised, we can pay overtime to the city employees. They can put their own tree stands up, sign waivers. We can mark off paint areas of golf courses in certain parks. And we can make this humanely. They know they're going after does who do not have foals, those who do not have children. And we do this properly, the people of Michigan, the soup kitchens will win, and so will Livonia residents. Guys, thank you very much for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Oh, hi. Michelle Seibel, three zero zero four five Fairfax Street. And I'm here to offer some material. I've done due diligence. I'm in the law profession. I would like to offer up some of my research that I did regarding deer management. I'm all about the urban. Yes, I think that you have to be an army in order to handle something like this. You cannot go rogue. You cannot use archery in your backyard to get deer plaques. You have to be realistic about, you know, managing life. I mean, this is God's creatures, that you're deciding their fates, you know? And God says, you don't kill, period. So to me, what is the best action that you can do? And they have, the Urban Coalition, and I've got lots of material here that tells you ways to take care of deer without having to call them. And I hope that we end up finding a good resolution without having to eliminate them. Because our coyotes, and I'd like to address them because nobody has addressed the coyotes at all. I'm thinking they're feeling a little left out. They are also very much part of our ecosystem. They keep the herd under control. It's natural. It's God's way of culling itself. And the coyotes, yes, why, they can be threats. There's a way to repel them. Hazing is one of the best ways to do it. Same thing with deer. There's many options. So I'm here to offer up what I've found out, and I support going to the Urban Coalition.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zalinsik will take that from you if you'd like to give it to him.
Thank you.
Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Hi again. Deb Christensen, Livonia. I'm also in agreement of getting together with the Coalition. I think that's important. What I've noticed, though, living in Livonia for most of my life, with the exception of, I'm approaching sixty, so with the exception of like three years, I've never seen any information about how to keep deer, like how do deer resist our yards from the city. I don't, I live not far from Heinz Park. I don't know if it's a bigger problem now. I mean, if you say it is, it is, I guess. And I think that it's worth educating our city on how to deter deer from our property. If people are concerned about Lyme disease, if they're concerned about ticks, if they're concerned about, you know, their hostas or landscape being eaten, why isn't education being used right now? You know, when I'm a social worker, and when we look at mental health, we look at least restrictive, least restrictive. People in the medical field do the same thing, least restrictive. Why aren't we approaching this problem with least restrictive? Instead of like, and I know tonight is not about a call, but I'm just asking you to consider least restrictive for these individuals that we consider deer. Thank you.
Thank you. If, for our Livonia TV people, if you can turn the mics down just a touch so we don't get so much feedback, that would be appreciated. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Amelia, three one seven one six Curtis Road. I am for the Coalition. I think it's important to receive all the information possible. I also think that it's important not to just gain one or two years, but let's say five years. You mentioned five years of the traffic incidents, but your number only talked about up to like last year or the year before that. I think gaining more information would be helpful to see how those affected the residents and traffic incidents and so on. Yes, deer also bring in disease, but what else does? Raccoons. Raccoons bring in much more disease, and the city does nothing about it. I've had deer or raccoon problems. I've called the police because there were very unhealthy raccoons walking in daylight near my house. Police do nothing, nor does animal control, and that was really upsetting. What else? Yeah, I think getting all the data is important, so I hope you do. And when you do do the Coalition, which I hope you do, putting it on the website and having people informed is really important. And the last thing I'll leave you with is, and the whole public, is if I am killed simply for living, let death be kinder than man.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Hello. My name is Beth Mack. I live on Fairfield near Rotary Park, Deer Central. Every single day, I've lived, we used to live in Rosedale Gardens. They had rat problems. They probably still do. That was so much easier to deal with than the deer, who are in my yard, my backyard, my fenced-in backyard, where I have the garlic spray on everything that is green. I have soap hanging in nylons everywhere in my yard. The deer are in my yard every single day. My dogs go in the yard, and the deer just stand there and wait till they're two feet away. In the spring, my dogs caught one, maimed it so bad, Livonia PD had to come out and shoot it. I don't want that, but I'm like up to here with the deer in my yard every day. You can talk about all the humane, oh, I'm going to put razor wire on my fencing. That's what I'm going to do, because we're running out of options. You guys need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, if people want to talk, if you want to address the council, we have to start to line up on either side so we don't lose some time between people speaking here. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
I would prefer to just hand my driver's license to all you folks for, because of what I'm going to say. I've hunted and fished all over the world, and I don't want a bullet in my head if there's any anti-hunting people here because of what I'm about to say.
Yeah, we're not going to take your driver's license.
But while you're, okay.
Let me speak.
Okay.
There you go. I have to ask you per ordinance for your name and address, whether or not.
William, William, William.
I have to ask you per ordinance for your name and address, whether or not, excuse me. Sir, excuse me, let me speak. I have to ask you per ordinance what your name and address is. Whether or not you choose to give it is up to you. Got it?
Sure.
Okay, proceed.
Livonia resident. I'm seventy years old, I've killed fifty-two bucks in my lifetime. I love the deer in Livonia. I can recall the very first one I saw, the first house I had in Livonia in 1979. I thought it was the coolest thing in the world, I really did. I've hunted all over the world for the same intention that we are all here tonight. It's called game management. It's not anything more than that. There are anti-hunting people that think you can just go shoot anything you want anywhere in the world, and that's not true at all. It really isn't, it's one of the most documented things in the world. You can go shoot a polar bear, but you can't bring it home. Fish and Wildlife Service and Customs and everything else will check your flight input. Licensed taxidermists cannot take an illegal animal in, so on and so forth. So, I've been around there, this is why I didn't want to leave my address, because I have over a hundred animals in my trophy room. What we're experiencing here is, I used to own a hundred and ten acres in northern Michigan, and I'm not speaking for the Department of Natural Resources by any means, but they were very much involved in my property because I asked them to be.
That's your time, sir, you're allowed a two minutes to speak.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Although I think I may know where you live, because I think my kids have trick-or-treated there and seen through the windows.
I have, I have the biggest buck.
We can talk afterwards, but I think I do know where you live.
I have the biggest buck I've ever seen in my life dead on one block from my house right here in Livonia.
Thank you, sir.
You can't make this.
Good evening, sir, your name and address, please.
Jacob Emrick, I live in Henry Rough, I live on Bell Creek, we get deer in our yard every day. We love them, don't want to see a call. I would like the traffic study that was done, two hundred deer, two hundred deer over five years, can we narrow that down to, I mean, the rut is when we see all the deer in the roads, and that's everywhere in the state of Michigan, and that's November, so I mean, is this all year long that the deer are getting hit, they're causing trouble? The other thing, as far as the Coalition goes, it sounds like you're going to join it. If you do, I would like, as your constituent, to, you guys do your own independent studies, don't just rely on this Coalition. I mean, there's false information everywhere, everybody knows that, so, that's it, I won't keep you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nobody else in regards to this matter, again, this is us seeking additional information, we will do our best to be timely in regards to getting that information and having future meetings. We have a motion to join the Urban Deer Coalition. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on that.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye.
That motion passes. There was also a second motion from that committee meeting in regards to.
Resolution.
Put this matter into the Committee of the Whole.
Ms. McIntyre, are you offering that motion at this time?
Support.
Mr. Morgan will be supporting that. I take it there's no additional comment from the council? Is there any council, excuse me, any audience communication in regards to referring this matter to Committee of the Whole? Committee of the Whole is all seven of us get upstairs in the room upstairs and find out the information, talk to the people, and if there's a lot of people participating, we have the meeting down here. Anybody's welcome to join and watch and give your comments at that time. Okay? Any audience comments? Going once, going twice? Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The matter passes, that meeting will be called as soon as we have information to move on, I promise.
And then we are requesting that the administration provide a report and recommendation regarding options for helping residents move deceased deer on their property to the curb site.
Support.
No, that's a just, well, I don't.
We can formally vote on it, it has more weight if we vote on it.
Okay, so.
Mr. President, hold on a second.
Ms. McIntyre, are you offering that motion?
Yeah, so it's a resolution requesting the administration to provide a report and recommendation regarding removal of deceased deer from residential property.
Thank you. Mr. Barr, you're seconding that?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Donovan, you'd like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will support the motion in the sake of having that discussion, however, I want to go on the record of saying that I do not think the city has enough manpower to pick up deer, dead deer in people's yards. I know it's very difficult, I know the deer are heavy, they're two, three hundred pounds, but our Department of Public Works is already stretched thin trying to maintain some sixty parks and maintain different roadways and plow the roads and leaf pickup, and the list goes on and on of all the tasks and duties whatnot DPW already has. I just do not see a realistic option for the city to start going on private property, and that's a whole nother discussion, when you go on private property and start removing certain items off of private property, because you can get into the argument of damaging property and this, that, and the other thing. So, currently right now, if you do have dead deer, it is your responsibility to remove it off your private property and bring it out to the roadway, and you can contact the city, and our trash collection company, GFL, will take that deer away from your yard, but I'm not going to be support further down the road to have the city get in the business of removing deer off of private property. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Just, his, Councilman Donovan's comments are well-stated and well-received, just want to, for pure clarity's sake, just say that what we are voting on here is simply to ask for the report and recommendation, which very well may say some similar things, but we're not voting whether to or not to do it, we're just asking for a recommendation from the administration. Thanks.
And the recommendation very well might be for them to call their favorite councilman to help move the deer, right?
The deers are.
The deers are. That would be a good.
The dead deer. Dead deers are.
Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Council President. I put that motion forward for report and recommendation for the fact that, I know Councilmember Donovan brought up that we had about, I think, over two hundred instances where this has happened. The feasibility of some of our residents, seniors, to move upwards of a two hundred pound dead carcass to the road doesn't seem feasible, and so whether it's the city or even finding a solution, that is a problem, we should find a solution to get it to the curb so it could be taken care of. That's my whole reason for that motion, and I think it's apparent to at least assist in developing some kind of feasibility or solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any comment from the audience in regards to this referral for information from the mayor? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on that as well.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. That matter passes as well. So, that concludes the report out from item number ten in regards to deer. If there's anybody who would like to leave at this time, if you're not, you're more than welcome to stay, but if this was the only item that you were here for, now would be the time to leave. Thank you very much, we appreciate your attendance and your comments.
And then any illusions we had that we were popular just dissipate.
Okay, we're going to get going here again with unfinished business. Item number eleven, that's a waiver petition from the Planning Commission for petition 2023030202 submitted by YoYo Spa One LLC requesting to operate a massage establishment at 33316 Plymouth Road, located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Mayfield and Farmington Road in the southwest quarter of Section 27. This was denied by the Planning Commission on May 9th of 2023 and appealed at a public hearing before the council on June 12th of 2023. Council, do I have a motion?
Council President, I'd like to offer a denying resolution.
Support.
We have a denying offered by Mr. McCullough and support from Vice President Toy. Is there any council comment on this matter, Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate the petitioner, and, you know, I know we've kind of dragged this out a few meetings. We do have an ordinance in place that restricts any kind of this type of establishment in vicinity to schools or daycares or public, I think it's public lands, and this does fall right across the street from a daycare and also a city park. For that reason, I'm going to be supporting the Planning Commission's decision in denial. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McCullough, we do have the petitioners here tonight. If you'd like to come to the podium and speak to us, you're more than welcome to. Would you like to speak to us?
Thank you. My name is Sherry Liu, and the whole process that I was involved in, including with the Consular, the Planning Department, Mr. Scott Miller, and then, oh, thank you for Ms. Sarah, and also Ms. Catherine for all the information, and I, we just submitted for the appeal. The reason why is already, everything is there without doors, and it's not going to be, I understand the whole regulation, we'll follow whatever the government regulation in the city of Livonia. We try to bring as much as the avenue and then creating jobs for this and this minority as Asian Chinese that we are, work really hard, we never take any welfare, we work every day, we work like hours and hours, and, yeah, that's all I wanted to say, nothing else.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions for the petitioner? I see none, Ms. McIntyre?
All right, is this working now? It sounds like it is. It's a miracle. I, I'm very, very conscious of our ordinances and what requires waivers and the reasons why, and proximity to daycares or schools or public lands. However, this ordinance regarding massage establishments was written back when massage establishments were very, very different. The first time I remember there being what I would call an acupressure-style Chinese massage was probably fifteen years ago with the first one, maybe eighteen years ago, I, you lose track of time, back at Laurel Park, Wusheng. That was the first one that I remember being in Livonia. And this ordinance was written, and I meant to look up when this ordinance was written, but it was written a number of years before we had these type of massage establishments. The old massage establishments were closed doors, full-body massages, oftentimes people choose to remove their clothes, and so there's a lot of opportunity for things to go on that you don't want, that you really don't want in proximity to where there are children or the public or parks. What we're talking about here is a very, very different kind of establishment. I'm very familiar with these establishments, I'm familiar with your first location, there are not closed doors, people do not undress for these massages, they're very popular. Many of the facilities, as you've noted, have waiting, have waiting periods if you don't have an appointment, and you go at peak times. And I know this is in proximity to a small condominium in Livonia, this does not draw people, you wouldn't know, in my experience, if people are coming to go in to eat at the restaurant or to have a massage, it's not, you know, it's nothing unsavory. And someone had mentioned that they didn't think this fit in with the other businesses that are there, there are several food establishments. I believe the spot you're taking over was some sort of medical or weight loss facility. So, to me, this is very much the same. So, for that reason, I am going to vote against the denying resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barr?
Just build off those comments a little bit. I, at one point in this, didn't have a strong opinion one way or the other, was inclined to just, under those circumstances, to just honor the, what the Planning Commission said and deny. As I thought about it more, and Councilman McCullough referenced the separation requirements from daycares, yeah, that's there, but it's not so much that it's prohibited, it just puts a higher bar to get those things, and that's part of the reason we're here, is this waiver use, and it's going to have an impact. I believe this requires five votes, if I'm not mistaken, tonight because of that. As Councilwoman McIntyre said, we have other businesses like this. I, as I've looked into this, a little bit of inquiry into the history of the other businesses associated with this, I don't see any reason to deny this one when we've approved a number of similar types of businesses in the city, and then just alluding to the use and the parking and that kind of thing, I think this is a less intense use than a restaurant or the other types of businesses in the area. So, at the end of the day, I don't, I don't see a reason to treat this differently than other similar types of businesses, so that's why I would vote to support, will be voting against the denial.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. If there's nothing else from the council in regards to this, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address item number eleven? There is a denying motion on the table. If you'd like to address this, please come to the podium.
Mr. President, while he's coming, can I make a ten-second comment?
Ten.
Yeah. The last thing I was going to say is just, in regard to the daycare centers nearby, I think it's worth noting, too, that this is across Plymouth Road from that daycare center, so, thanks.
Good evening, sir, your name and address, please.
Yeah, 30523 Hoy.
Your name, do you want to give your name?
Steve Gordon.
Thank you, sir.
You know, I'm a Livonia resident, twenty-three years, I've known Ms. Ping fourteen years. She's been manager of Elite Spa for seven years, very respectful woman, never had a problem in the spa, very clean spa. Many grandmas, grandpas, men and women of all ages use the spa, whether it's foot massage, body massage, I see no reason why it should be denied, and I hope the city council feels the same way. I mean, I know there's an ordinance, but times change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing else from the audience, I will ask Ms. Nash to take the vote on this. I will remind my council colleagues that a yes vote, in this case, is a denying vote. Ms. Nash?
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
No.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
No.
Councilmember Donovan.
No.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
The resolution fails.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr.
I'll offer an approving.
Okay, let's be clear here, you are offering Resolution A in the packet, approving with conditions, is that correct?
Yes.
Just to be clear, because we need multiple resolutions.
Yes, thank you.
Do I have a second on that resolution?
Support.
Do I have a second for Ms. McIntyre? Is there any comment from the council adding to the conversation? Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate all the comments back and forth from council and the resident and the business owner. You know, there are ordinances in place for a reason, and there are special waiver uses as well for a reason, so I'm comfortable with supporting this establishment, this business. To Mr. Barr's point, it is across the streets, it is quite a distance away from a daycare facility, but it is a special waiver use. So, I think you have a good track record as a good business person in the community. I think the city of Livonia needs to do its very best job of partnering with our businesses in our community, fill up vacant buildings, vacant units, and make sure that we're getting a good usage and a good business in our community, so I will be supportive. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing further from the council in regards to this, is there any audience comments in regards to the approving motion on the floor? I see no audience comments. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote in regards to the approving motion? In this case, yes, or an affirming vote will actually approve the matter.
Councilmember McCullough.
No.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Councilmember, Vice President Toy.
No.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
No.
President Jolly.
Aye. The matter passes in regards to Resolution A, four to three, is that correct?
Needs five votes.
It does not need five votes, Resolution B needs five votes.
And I'll offer that resolution, Mr. Chair.
So, just to clear the record up here, Resolution A does pass with four votes, Mr. Barr is now offering Resolution B, which would waive the requirement that prohibits massage establishments from being located within four hundred feet of daycare facility or public park. Are you offering that, sir?
I am.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by McIntyre. Is there any additional comment from the council? Ms. McIntyre?
Yeah, and again, I'll reiterate what I did before, these are not the massage establishments[1751.33] These are not the massage establishments of old where there were closed doors and people disrobing for massages. These are open door. No one removes anything other than your shoes if you're having reflexology. The daycare is across the street. The kids won't be exposed to whatever goes on here anymore than they'll be exposed to the margaritas that are served happily to many, including myself, at Los Palapas. So I have absolutely no concerns. I don't feel that this is adjacent to, adjacent to a daycare facility.
Mr. Barr, did you want to speak to this?
I'm, I'm all set.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. To Mr. Toramina, just to clarify, by approving this special waiver usage to waive this requirement, this is specific to this location, and it would stay, it would, if they move out tomorrow, a new business owner that's operating the same sort of establishment would have to come back before council to seek the same waiver. They couldn't just transfer it tomorrow. They'd have to come back through the process so we could do our due diligence on the next business.
If I understand correctly, this is the waiver for the separation requirement. There is a provision in the resolution, the approving resolution that was just adopted that limits this waiver to this applicant only. So the vote that you're about to take does not affect what you just mentioned. It's not with respect to the operators. This has everything, this, this is to deal with the separation requirement. Is that, I believe that's what the resolution is here.
That's correct.
So again, just to clarify, the action council's taking tonight will only be for this business owner, and if they were to leave tomorrow and a new business, the same sort of establishment, they would have to seek council approval yet again.
That is correct. There should have been a condition in the resolution that you just approved that, that provided that limitation.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, through the chair to Mr. Toramina. Again, and I should remember this, but my planning days are a little ways behind me. Is, is the required separation for a massage establishment the same as liquor?
There's various separation requirements for liquor licenses.
For Class C?
They're, no, that's a thousand feet. But I believe some of the packaged liquor sales have a four-hundred-foot separation requirement. So it's similar.
Okay, so, but we, we sell liquor within, we serve liquor to Class C establishment within four hundred feet of the daycare as well, right?
No, that, that has a, I believe, a four or five-hundred-foot separation requirement, correct? Yeah, I'd have to look.
And, and that, that may have been grandfathered, right? But, because that's may have, but anyway, but my point is that this is comparable in terms of separation requirements, Class C and, and this facility.
Correct.
Yeah. And so we allow Los Palapas, again, to happily serve their margaritas with absolutely no adverse or ill effects on the kids that attend the daycare. So to me, this is certainly no, no more intrusive for the children or their families.
Thank you. Any audience comments on the motion to approve waiving the requirement prohibiting massage establishments from being located within four hundred feet of a daycare facility or public park? Going once, going twice? I see none. This matter to be approved will require five affirming votes. Ms. Nash?
Councilmember McCullough?
No.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
No.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
President Jolly?
Aye. The matter does receive four approving votes, but it needs five to pass. So therefore, the matter is denied. Thank you very much to the petitioner. We'll move on to item number twelve. That is a request to approve an additional appropriation and expenditure from the Department of Public Works for the installation and rental of a temporary chiller unit at the Bennett Library from the unexpendited fund balance of the library fund. Can I have a motion in regards to this item?
I'll offer approving.
Can I have a second? We have an approving from McCullough, a second from Toy. Is there any comment from the council?
Mr. President?
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you. So this is something that is more of a, of a needed basis. This is to provide temporary cooling to the Bennett Library for potentially up to two years while the design and replacement of the current chiller is designed and procured and installed. It's not the, the best game plan, but at the end of the day, the indoor air quality and comfort to our patrons and our employees at the library, to me, to me, is number one. Obviously, getting the chiller, we've talked about this in detail, if anybody was here for the study. More along the lines of, let's see what we could do to fast-track the design. Problem is, is, as in everything, lead times are extreme. Somewhere upwards of fifty to sixty weeks currently, and hopefully that starts dropping. But going forward, that is the main reason, that I don't see any other options than to proceed with this and ensure that we, we provide the proper indoor air quality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Donavick?
I have a question for a representative from DPW.
Mr. Rushlow? If you don't mind, please identify your name and your title with the city.
Good evening, sorely Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Rushlow, for being here tonight. I understand we're going to spend, we're talking about spending a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for two years to rent an air conditioning unit for, you know, for all intensive purposes. With that being said, two years from now, a year and a half from now, what do you think it's going to cost to replace the actual unit so we're no longer renting? What do you think a new unit's going to cost the city? I'm just trying to get a better overall understanding, as we've kind of talked about our needs assessment for structures in our city, our city buildings, how they're falling apart. You know, we're going to spend a hundred and forty-three thousand. I'm going to support it. We need to. We, we can't have our residents and our city employees working in a, in a library with no air conditioning. It's, you can't do that. So we have to spend, in my opinion, we have to spend a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars over the next two years, but I can only imagine what it's going to cost for a new unit, for a permanent unit.
Right. And to answer your question, yes, we've been going through the design process to replace that right now. And through that process, is when we heard the procurement's going to take thirty to fifty weeks. Once we hit the okay button, the contractor can now order it in order to get the unit. So for the better part of the next two years, we'll be waiting for that new unit. The current estimate from our architects and our mechanical engineers working on this for the full replacement is around a million dollars for that permanent unit.
And how many air conditioning units does that building need?
It's just one unit. It's a very large one unit. The current one has three compressors in that chiller. Two of those are not working properly. It's basically running on a third capacity.
Okay. And this is just one library, and the other ones probably need equipment at some point, too. So thank you, Mr. Rushlow, thank you to DPW for all the hard work you do. I appreciate it. I'll be in support of this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody from the audience in regards to this item? Okay, I see none. This is an opportunity to keep reading cool, correct? All right, Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Can I collect my thoughts before I vote on this one?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye.
Ms. Nash, aye, because my mic was off again.
Sorry.
Thank you very much. Item number thirteen is the award of a contract using the qualification-based selection QBS process from the Department of Public Works to provide environmental engineering services to monitor sampling, data evaluation, and reporting to the city's type, at the city's type-three landfill and former Act eighty-seven landfill and other related projects for five years, beginning July one of two thousand and twenty-three through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-eight. Can I have a motion on this item? We have an approving from Toy. Do I have a second?
Support.
Is that from Donavick? Second from Donavick. Is there any comment from the council on this? Seeing none. I'll, I'll just, did we get the report that we requested? Okay. Is, is there any audience comment on item number thirteen? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Moving on to fourteen, that's a request for additional services with NTH Consultants for environmental engineering services contract from Public Service Division to amend a five-year agreement with NTH Consultants, LTD, through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-eight to provide as-needed environmental engineering services related to the city's landfill in the amount of fifty thousand dollars annually. And I believe that is not to exceed up to fifty thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Citing Council Resolution two fifty-seven dash nineteen, can I have a motion?
Support.
We have an approving motion from Mr. Morgan. Do I have a second? We have a second from Ms. McIntyre. Any comment from the council? Any comment from the audience on fourteen? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The matter is approved. Item fifteen is the award of a contract from the Engineering Division for the water main improvements for project areas seven, eight, and nine. We have new data on this item.
Council President?
Mr. McCullough?
I'd like to offer an approving toward the contract to the lowest qualified bidder, Murphy Pipeline Contractors, in the amount of five million, four hundred and twenty-two, five hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Is there a second for that?
Support.
We have a second from Ms. McIntyre. Any council comments?
Council President?
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you. I want to, you know, I know we've talked a lot about this, and between both contractors, I know I've done great work in, in the city. I know that the, Murphy's been bought out by D and D, vice versa. At the end of the day, we have to look at lowest qualified bidder. And we had a recommendation that is new to us with new information from administration and OHM toward the contract Murphy. Also, you know, it's not taken lightly. This is over a five, five-and-a-half million-dollar project to the city. And while the difference of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, close to a hundred and sixty-three, might seem small in that grand scheme, we're up here sitting, talking about items that kind of mirror the magnitude, and we've had longer conversations. I think it's fiscally responsible to trust the staff and the engineers from the city and, and go with the lowest qualified. It goes to our procurement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the engineering staff. Thank you to everyone that's participated in this. I, I do appreciate it. Thanks, OHM, et cetera. I'm not going to be supporting this motion. There's just a lot of questions for me that have not been answered, some concerns that I've, I've found with making my own due diligence. And I'm, I'm, I'm all for hiring local people that are down the street, that are very accessible. There's been a lot of discussion and a lot of confusing information about who is going to be actually physically doing the work. We're talking about hiring a company from the state of Florida now that's a large private equity firm, and, and there's been no guarantee of who's actually doing the work. Now, I know there's been a lot of discussion back and forth about the quality workmanship of D and D, and, and I've done my research on them, and, and I've heard great things about D and D and their staff and, and their localness to our community, but D and D's not doing the work anymore. Murphy Pipeline from Florida's doing it. And I don't know who's going to be contracted to physically do the work. So that's why I'm not going to be supportive of it. But again, I do appreciate our engineering staff. I do appreciate OHM and all the opinions here. So I wanted to just get that out there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
Just to reiterate briefly what I said at the study meeting a couple, about a month ago. We had a lot of discussion about this. The recommendation from the administration was to go with Murphy. After all that discussion, I personally gave the represent, the department head that was here ample opportunity to explain to us what had changed since they made that recommendation that should change that, and he was not able to say anything. And so therefore, I say we go with the original recommendation, which also happens to be the lowest cost to our taxpayers. Thanks.
Thank you. If there's noth, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, I'd like to say that, you know what, I, I looked at this very hard also, and, you know, I understand that Murphy is the lowest bidder, and the second bidder is someone out of Michigan, someone who's close, we can reach out and touch their business. The owner lives in the city, the employees live in the city. They're going to be drinking the water that they actually provide and they, while they do this pipe bursting. Murphy is, and Florida, and they've, they've been known to hire contractors, and, you know, I, it's just a company that is not local. And for the, the amount, even though I'm very fiscally responsible for the amount, the difference, I think it's better to hire for our community. I believe it's something that the citizens deserve, to have someone here in this city that will be drinking the actual water that is pipe-bursted instead of somebody from Florida that doesn't, could care less what you're doing. So I am not going to be in support for, of this resolution.
Ms. Toy and then Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mr. President. In serving on this council many years back, I had a very dear colleague that convinced several of us to go with a company from Florida. And I, I'll tell you, I regret that vote every day. That vote cost us more money, being an out-of-state bidder, than we would have with a local bidder that, quite frankly, probably shops here, does business here, hires people here. And nothing gets out of saying people, because we deal with a lot of people in and out of this state. But I think it behooves us, council, seriously. Take a strong look at this, because the cost overrun, very possibly, I'm going to keep my eye on this. I wish I had had more time to contact a couple of our department heads to see what those cost overrun were just several years ago. And I, and again, I, I regret that vote every day. And I see others shaking their head, and I've had former members call me and say, I can't believe you guys are going with an out-of-state bidder again on something like this project. And you can roll your eyes, council, all you want, but I'm telling you something. When you, when you serve on this council and you live through some of this stuff, you learn to regret some of the votes you took, and that was one that I got to honestly tell you was a bad, bad vote for this community. Whether it was ten dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, it was a bad vote. Thank you.
Ms. Toy, I have a present for you.
Thank you.
Ms, Madam Chair, can I have the floor, please?
Oh, please.
Thank you. Can I have the representative from Murphy come to the podium, please? I, I just have a, a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind.
Sir?
Can you tell me your name?
My name's Mark D. Michelle.
Okay, and you are the former owner of what was D and D, correct?
Yes, sir.
Your company was purchased by Murphy Pipeline, correct?
Correct.
You are currently located in the state of Michigan?
Yes, Canton Township.
Excuse me?
Canton Township.
Canton Township, about ten miles away from here, correct?
Yes.
I asked you at the study meeting if you would personally be overseeing this project in Livonia, and you said what?
I said yes, and we also confirmed that in writing with the additional information that was requested.
So you, you are giving us your word here today that that has not changed?
That has not changed.
No further questions. Thank you, sir.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, we engage OHM to do a lot of engineering and advisory work for us. And the reason we engage them and pay them considerable fees to do that is because of their outstanding expertise and knowledge. We have an excellent city engineer. Microphone's dead again. Anyway, sorry, I'll start over. We, we, the city of Livonia engages OHM as a consultant on projects for engineering services and advisory services. And the reason we pay them considerable fees to do this work for us is because of their expertise, knowledge, and experience. We have an outstanding city engineer, we have an outstanding DPW department, but we do these projects episodically, even if we do a few a year, we do a few a year. OHM manages projects like this, you know, I don't know how many hundreds of times a year. know how many hundreds of times a year. We had a really good discussion at the June 5 meeting. It was referenced that we asked for a certification or a guarantee that the work would be personally overseen by our local representative, and we received that verbally. We received it in writing. And on June 27, Jessica Katers, one of the principals at OHM, sent a letter indicating that OHM had no concerns with us accepting the low bidder. So, if we are going to continue to have these contracts with OHM, which, by the way, I support and think are extremely valuable, and we get recommendations from the experts in this field who know the players, know our needs, know the references, saying that they recommend accepting the lowest bidder. And to Mr. Barr's point, when Mr. Roroff, the department head, was here and we asked him, you know, there had been some background and kind of whispers about how bidagiri was really the better selection. And we asked, we gave Mr. Roroff an opportunity to say if he recommended selecting someone, bidagiri, who was not the lowest bidder. And he did not say that he recommended that. And then since that time, we have the letter from Ms. Katers. So, you know, to Mr. McCullough's point, if we're talking about $100,000-ish, and sometimes you hear, well, you know, in the scope of this, that's not a lot of money. But to the point that was made, that is a lot of money. That's someone's salary and benefits in the city. And with all due respect to Ms. Toy, and her experience is very valuable. She shares it. It provides guidance and wisdom to us. The fact that however many years back, someone that was headquartered in Florida was hired for a project that didn't go well doesn't have any bearing on this specific situation. It would only have bearing if it were the same contractor doing the same kind of work. So, I am 100% in support of giving this contract, awarding this contract to the lowest bidder. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else?
Yes, go right ahead, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other thing that I forgot to mention, too, and I brought up at the study, on any of these bonds, when they go out, or any of these bids, when they hit mitten, that's our website for procurement, there's bid bonds, there's performance bonds that all go through a project. So, if something ever happened to a company, we make sure that these things are in place to protect the city's assets. It doesn't go lightly. And when I bring up the lowest qualified bidder, that is exactly, to my colleague's point, which came from OHM and from administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address us? Anyone from the audience wishing to address us? Hearing and seeing none, would the clerk please take the vote on 15?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Vice President Toy?
No. Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. We will move on now to item number 16, a related issue, a request to amend the contract with OHM advisors for construction engineering for the 2023 Water Main Replacement Project for Project Areas 7, 8, and 9 from the Engineering Division, citing Council Resolution 336-21. Can I have a motion?
Council President, I'll offer an approving.
Support.
Support is from Mr. Donavick. Is there any comment from the council? I see none. Any comment from the audience in regards to item 16? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. That matter is approved, and that concludes our scheduled events for this evening. We will return to audience communication. Is anybody wishing to address us on any non-agenda items at this point in time? I see someone approaching the podium. Good evening. Please tell me your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Bob Gusek. I live on West Chicago.
Please proceed.
Ann Arbor City Council recently passed Michigan's first driving equality ordinance, which restricted Ann Arbor police from pulling over motorists for relatively minor offenses, including cracked windshields, loud exhaust, tinted windows, broken taillights, items hanging from river mirrors, which my 18- or 19-year-old son was pulled over by Livonia Police for. And I think it actually brought him to tears, you know, getting pulled over. But that's here nor there. Items hanging from river mirrors, issues with tags on license plates. Police can still enforce such laws by mailing tickets. They just can't be the basis for pulling over that motorist anymore. An Eastern Michigan university professor led a research study that found significant racial disparities in such stops, with non-white motorists stopped and searched more frequently. I hopes Livonia City Council will adopt a similar ordinance that would lessen anxiety for people of color drivers, younger drivers, all drivers, also lessen potential risk to our police officers and potential liability lawsuits to Livonia City taxpayers.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else wishing audience comment? I see none.
Motion to adjourn.
I, can I have a second on that?
Support.
I think we can safely show seven. We will be back with the scheduled study meeting at approximately 9:15. Or 9:10? We'll say 9:10.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's 8:55 now. We'll do 9:10, and we apologize for the delay. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.